Any order? Misty, would you call the rule, please?
How Landville. J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Luken.
Here.
Travis Borback.
Here.
Larry Pratt. Gary Hellkamp.
Here.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, please remember, counsel, if you have a conflict of interest, let the rest of the council know before you vote on that particular agenda item. I need a motion to approve an amended agenda. We have two changes tonight. Under current claims, the new amount is 198,332.93. And that comes about, if you go to page 11. Vescow, Inc., the two charges there totaling $4,895.12 are being removed. So that brings the new total from the 203,228.05 to a new total of 198,332.93. The second change is to the new business, would like to add new business item B, which doubles the length of our new business agenda. And that is for, Misty handed out a sheet to each of you. But the motion would be acknowledge a notification of raffle from casting vets to raise funds for their organization. Tickets will sell locally during the Family Day Festival, July 27, 2024, and are $20 each. The raffle is to win a Nordic Legend Power Ice Auger Combo. Winner will be drawn and notified July 29, 2024. We amended to change the total for current claims and to add a new business item B.
Make a motion to approve an amended agenda.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the July 1 council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the July 1 council meeting.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for 186,448.14.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve an amended current claims for a new total of 198,332.93?
Make a motion to approve the current claims, adjusted to 198,332.93.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
Make a motion to approve Wells Fargo credit card claims for $14,436.10.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to communications from the public. Do we have anybody that wants to address the council tonight? Mary Smith and other business owners have asked to speak. Are they with us? All right, come on down.
Come down to the mic.
Mary, can you come down to the microphone, please? Give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mary Smith. My address is 401 Battle Mountain Avenue, Unit E, Hot Springs, South Dakota 57747.
And before you get started, just a couple of things. We do have a public hearing at 7:10. So if we go over, if we get to 7:10 and you and the council aren't finished, we just ask you to take a pause while we do our public hearing, and then we'll bring you back up and continue the conversation. So the second thing I would like to add, counsel, I'd like to propose that we do this communications from the public a little differently than we have in the past. We have been limiting to five minutes for each of the people that want to address the council. And I don't think we're being fair to the people that want to address the council and council itself by limiting it to five minutes. My proposal is, is that we give the individual an opportunity for five minutes to explain to us why they want to talk to the council. But I think you folks need to have additional time if you have any clarifying questions that you want to ask or any comments. I just, I'm concerned that by giving this whole thing five minutes and five minutes only, the person speaks, we're up here like bobbleheads, and it seems like we're really not interested in what you have to say. If we don't engage with you and if we have some concerns, say, help me understand what you meant by that. So, counsel, unless you have any pushback, I'd like to give, I'd like to change it up to the personal addresses for five minutes, and then each of you will have an opportunity to ask a follow-up question.
I agree.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right. So we'll just have you starting at 7:07. And we'll get to 7:10, we'll do our public hearing, and then we'll come back to you. How's that sound? All right, thank you.
So I've circulated a petition on behalf of the businesses here in Hot Springs regarding the construction and how it has impacted their businesses and what has happened as a result of the construction. I have 10 businesses here in town who have signed the petition. So the concern is, you know, the lack of being financially reimbursed for the damage that has occurred as a result of, you know, people not being able to get into their business, parking situations, all, you know, as I'm sure all y'all are aware of that. You know, the proposal is to perhaps, you know, reimburse, you know, some of their taxes on the prior years when the construction was in effect. You know, perhaps reimburse them some way so that the business owners and whatnot, you know, can survive in this town. So, you know, that's basically my take, my concern. I have 10 owners, so I'm certain if I were to keep going, I would have 20. If you would like me to do that, I would be happy to do that. Because I was just, and there was, people, other people were supposed to attend. I do have one of the business owners here. So that's about all I have to say, is a concern, you know, for the damage that has happened because of the construction as a result. Do you have any questions on me? Other than if you'd like to see the petition, you're welcome to it. Would you like to see it?
Yes. Since you've taken the time to do that, I think council needs to take a look at it.
Do you have any idea how we would fund this?
Perhaps by going back and looking at taxes during that time. I'm not the expert in how you guys are going to fund it. And I'm not trying to be rude, you know. It's just that there needs to be a point at which here's the loss of revenue to these businesses.
I agree.
And then my thought is to do a percentage that can be afforded, you know? A percentage of the revenue and reinforce them as best as can be afforded. Compensation for what has happened.
Okay. So we're at that 7:10 public hearing. So just ask you to, you know, take a seat, we'll do our public hearing. I don't expect it will take long.
Okay.
And then we'll get right back to
And then, yeah.
Right back to asking, answering questions for you.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, so we're at 7:10. We have a public hearing tacked on the license application from the Mammoth site for a special sale alcoholic beverage license for the Cool Mammoth Nights events on July 20, 2024, and August 30, 2024, at the Mammoth site, 1800 Highway 18 bypass. Is anyone from, here from the Mammoth site, answering any questions council might have? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to? Counsel? No questions here. All right.
Is this a new event that they, or is this something they've been doing?
They've been doing this every year.
I've gotten special sale alcoholic beverage license applications before, but I'm not aware of this Cool Mammoth Nights event.
If I can make just one comment, if nothing else, for the benefit of the new council members, is based on South Dakota codified law, council can deny a request like this based on two criteria. And I'm looking at Misty to make sure I don't misstate something. One is the location, and the other is the, if there is an issue with
Character competence requirement.
Character competence or fitness. And certainly hasn't been an issue with the Mammoth site folks for, because this is a routine fundraiser for them. And the other thing is the location. And the way the state law is written, if we deny a license based on location, that organization at that location can never get another license. Am I correct in that, Misty?
That's what we were told the last time we denied one.
Yeah, so these temporary alcoholic beverage licenses, especially for fundraisers or social events, are fairly typical council actions. They're typical because you can't just go sell alcohol because you want to. You have to have a temporary alcoholic beverage license. And so if we were to deny it, it would be based on those two criteria. So, and again, for, maybe for the benefit of the public, if you never hear us denying one of those licenses, that's the reason, is we have very narrow criteria on which to make a decision on. And quite frankly, it rarely, rarely ever happens that the words that Misty used, or location, is a reason to deny a license. So I'll shut up at that point.
I have a comment. I just feel that the people that apply for these license applications, it would be very nice if they showed up in case we did have questions. You know, I can't, we can't deny it based on the basis that they didn't show up. But it would be nice if they did show up in case we had questions.
Thank you. To Misty's comment, I wasn't specific enough in my response that they've done these. As Misty said, I don't know if they've done this specific Cool Mammoth Nights, but they do have frequent fundraisers like this throughout the year that council has repeatedly approved. When I said, yes, they've done these before, have they done a Cool Mammoth Nights? I need to correct that, I don't know they've done that, but they have done, done these very frequently that council's approved. Anyone else?
Yeah, I agree with Councilwoman. I believe that maybe if we could modify the form, that's the application, to state that, or inform them at the time that they're filling out the application, that they must come in front of the council to, for any questions council may have about the particular event. This way, that would alleviate any questions that we would have sitting there second guessing like we are tonight on whether this event has been, has happened before. I agree with the mayor. Mammoth site has had alcohol licenses for events in the past without any incident. But maybe if we look at the form, we can modify or hand them a form, a piece of paper that says you must appear in front of council to be available for any questions about the event you're proposing. Thanks.
So looking at the form, responding to Linda and J.R.'s request, this is a form that appears to be prepared by the city. There is a section on it that showing that a public hearing is required. So maybe adding something right under there that their attendance at this hearing is required. Your thoughts?
It's not how it's been done in the past. We don't have that stated anywhere other than the form. But if that's what you're requesting and that's what you'll insist and enforce, I'm willing to change the form if there's no legal reason we may.
Our attorney, do you feel there's any legal reason that we can't add a statement to the form that their attendance at the public hearing is required?
Correct. I think just as long as that's, their absence isn't the sole reason you're denying it. I don't see an issue.
Yeah. And as Bill talked about, whether they're here or not, isn't grounds for them to say that they can either have it or not have it.
Right.
It just
Well, I think it's just
You require them to be, or they're not here, you're speaking to them.
I mean, it's just a common courtesy, like you're applying for this, but you're not here to answer any questions that we may have.
How about if we, you know, encouraged it rather than required it? Would that Yeah, just verbiage, you know, don't have to say required, but, you know. Encourage is wonderful.
May prevent the delay of an approval. Their presence may prevent the delay of an approval.
Might be a little softer touch.
Yeah.
All right. So then with our attorney's guidance, we'll work out the language. But I'm getting the sense council would like some kind of statement here, encouraging the folks to be, this isn't the first time that this question has been raised.
Right.
All right. Well, with that then, if there's anyone else, let's go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:18. And then I need a motion, please, to approve, deny, or postpone the license application from the Mammoth site.
I make a motion to approve the license application from the Mammoth site for special sale alcoholic beverage license for the Cool Mammoth Nights events on July 20, 2024, and August 30, 2024, at the Mammoth site, 1800 Highway 18 bypass.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Mary? Come on back down.
We're going to finish our discussion. Oh, that Mary, I was thinking Mary Jerome, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Carl Hall. My address is 717 North 23rd Street, Hot Springs. I also have a business at 321 North River Street. And first, I want to thank Mary for, as just a general member of the public, not a business owner, for, you know, seeing what we're going through as business owners. And as you can see by the attendance, I'm the only one of those 10 names that's here, so I guess I'm a de facto speaker. Do I have any sense that compensation is going to come around? Absolutely not. And I know a couple of business owners have ran this up to the state level, and there is nothing out there. I know for a fact Brenney Step made some phone calls and talked to some people at the state level, and there is just nothing there. But I think what I want this group to get out of this tonight as a business owner is, you know, that it was painful, it is painful. And, you know, there's a lot of businesses in this town, like myself included. If I didn't have a second revenue stream, I'd have shut the door a year ago. And it's been the same thing, section after section. Right? We've complained at the Tuesday meetings. You start an area, finish it. We're three years into it and that's still not happening. They're still jumping. Okay, they're still leaving things half-done. You know? And, you know what? The reason that probably the other nine people aren't here is because they don't think it's going to do any good. You know, but what I do think would be nice is, you know, I have not seen, you know, Deb, you've been in my store. Mr. Luken's, you've been in my store, right? But I have not seen one member of the council, one ward member, you know, just poke their head in and say, hey, how you doing? You know? What's your struggles today? Not once. Okay? You know, Mr. Mayor, you walk by my building every day. You don't even look in the window. You know, I, we are too comfortable as a community. And we need to start getting uncomfortable. Okay? I'll tell you, some of the business owners, building owners, they are uncomfortable. Hey, we're squeezing right now, getting by. You know, waiting for the completion, waiting for better days. We have a whole block right now, Minnetoka Block, destroyed. Okay? Not a business left there. One coming in September. You know? People are shutting their doors. You know? And not because it's hard, because it's almost impossible in that situation. You know, so just a little recognition. You know, just a little conversation. You know, and I don't know if it's been brought up at other city council meetings. This is my first one since I moved back in 2017. But, you know, it's rough. And, you know, not only that, it's, you know, expectations, you know, they're not being met either. You know? This crew has not hit one elevation in the entire time on this project. Almost every elevation from south to north is off. Okay? With slope sidewalks and other garbage. And we're putting up with it. So our feeling as business owners and as townspeople and as a community is that you all, this city or us as a community, has written the state a blank check and just thrown our hands up. You know, and I don't know if that's absolutely true or not. I don't know what goes on behind the scenes, but that's how we feel. And I'll cut it at that. Are your questions?
Have you guys quantified your losses?
I started this business during construction.
Oh, okay.
And I've moved. So I went from south to north, from the frying pan to the fire. I knew that was coming. But I'm speaking, you know, kind of across the, across the board for businesses. You know, Jennings was rough, we all know that. And then it just seemed to steamroll after that. Because I've been to the Tuesday meetings. And I know the main complaint is, why can't we just finish a section and move on? You know, and I feel bad for the contractors. You know, I think, I think that should be levied at DOT. Those guys are just doing their job. But no, but I will make a comment on that question. We had a Zoom, I believe, a public Zoom meeting about the construction project, 2021, 2020 timeframe, can't really remember. And I brought up some questions about that. And I asked, has anybody done a projected revenue loss? The answer was no. The answer I got was, we talked to Rapid City about what they went through for the 8th Street project. Okay? That's incomparable. You know, it's just incomparable. You're talking from most of the Spearfish, 100,000 people. Right? Talking a city that has go-arounds. Hey, we don't have either of that. So it was a terrible comparison. And the next question I asked was, you know, have we done any kind of, you know, other impact studies or anything prior to this? And again, the answer was, we reached out to Rapid City and how it impacted, you know, their community. I mean, Hill City went through this not too long ago, they probably would have been a lot better comparison. So, you know, that's, that's kind of where I stand on, on that question. But no, I don't, me personally, I don't have revenue prepared before.
Right, okay. Appreciate that. Anyone else? So some answers. Reimbursement. Carl, you had talked about the fact that there had been a lot of conversations with the state about, you know, are there any possibilities of reimbursement? And the state's been very open that that simply is not going to happen. So when it comes to, you know, impact, that isn't something they're concerned with. You'd also mentioned, you know, the city is writing a blank check. Can you help me understand what you meant when you said that? Because this is not a city project, this is a state project, so I just
I do understand that it is a state project. But it's our town. It's your town. And I think, you know, and you can do it, you know, in a respectful way. But those construction crews and DOT, they need to be reminded of that. Probably regularly. We need to have a little bit of a say. You know, at least an opinion. You know, at least that, hey, can we, can we course correct here or whatever? You know what I mean? Because just, I'm not somebody that doesn't know what I'm talking about. Okay? I've done 100 million dollar refits on aircraft carriers, managed them. I know about mandates, I know about schedules, I know about cost overruns.
Yeah.
Not surprising to me.
Yeah. And, you know, along with, is there any, when the discussion was, is there anything available for the state to do? We also looked at, is there anything the city can do from a property tax, from a sales tax? And there just isn't. So I've had one business owner, you know, that I've talked with that I appreciated saying, we knew it was going to hurt. We just didn't know it was going to hurt this much. You were talking about the elevation changes with the boulevards. You were one of the first focuses that had the significant change, and you had mentioned it, and we had talked about that. And we're still chatting with the state, you know, about how is that all going to be resolved and who's going to be responsible. A lot of the conversations are happening. We're just not in a situation right now where we can share a lot of information. And that makes it tougher for the business owners that have been significantly impacted. When you, you talk about, you know, the contractors jumping from place to place. Why are they working in three different places? Why aren't they just focused on one area and getting that completed? That was part of the bid process. They were told, the state told them, that if you feel that you can get this job done, you know, more efficiently or quicker by working in a number of different areas, then you can do that. We're now the third year into a two-year project, so that certainly hasn't worked out the way everybody would hope that it would. And I don't know if those answers make you feel any better. Um, and I don't know if those answers make you feel any better, but the, I, I don't, I really don't know what more we can do. When you were talking about Brent, uh, he was the one that, you know, helped us understand, uh, everyone that he'd reached out to at the state and, and gotten the answers of, there's nothing we can do for you.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you know, Mary took the time to do this and I just wanted to kind of come and speak. Um, I was hoping some of the other business owners would come as well. But I, I think, you know, I, I think they kind of would have been along the same lines as I was, you know, in, in, in what they feel, you know, and do we know there's probably no chance of compensation, absolutely. But, you know, we just, we just kind of feel abandoned.
Yeah.
You know? Just left for dead.
From, from a city standpoint, it's not that, you know, we're not helping because we don't care. There's anything that, that we're able to do. We've looked at the, the, you know, the, what can we do and what can't we do? And it's pretty much, we can't do anything. Well-
Yeah. But anyway, thank you all.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming.
I have an idea, I don't know if that's good or bad, but with the taxes, why can they not be compensated? Why can the businesses not be compensated next year by a cut in their taxes, the ones that were impacted? And I can go back to these businesses and say, can you look at your revenue for these years and compare it against your prior year? Now you have the impact that was never done.
Yeah.
And in the future taxes for these businesses who were severely impacted, why can the taxes not be lowered next year, the year after that, the year after that? And slowly but surely, they would be compensated. And I know that they would feel completely different about the situation that's happened.
So again, and we need to move on, but, um, not to ignore what you just said.
Does that make sense or is it-
Well, it, it, it does, but again, it's not a matter of why don't we do it? It's can we do it? And what we have found out so far is that there isn't any options for us when it comes to, uh, you know, waiving a, a property tax or a, um, the sales tax or whatever, or, you know, looking at something and reimbursing it. That just isn't something, as I understand it right now, that we can do.
You can't lower it? You don't have the power to lower the tax? Who does?
The, the state. I, if anybody does, it would be the state. We don't. So again, we're not going to get that question answered for you tonight. Let us look at it a little more and see where we go with, with an answer, but it's-
Do you go to the state and recommend that?
Um, my understanding is Brent has pretty much done those same things, you know, and asking what can the legislature do? Uh, I would suggest that you go to, you know, District 30 legislators and see if they can't get some kind of legislation, uh, you know, passed or have them approach somebody at the state and, and see if there's an answer at that level that we haven't found. But we, we've done, we've done what we understand we can do.
And yeah, I'll talk to the businesses and see maybe if they won't attend the next meeting. If they can see any hope at all, I'm sure they'll show up.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Communications from public?
Gerald Colligan, 1038 Evanston, member of the local Elks Club. Uh, Elks Club 1151, would like to thank the city of Hot Springs for, uh, putting in the, the basketball poles this morning. We appreciate that very much. Also, hopefully the, uh, what was it, last meeting? The, the money that was okayed for the resurfacing, hopefully that'll, that'll add to that entire project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gerald.
Thank you.
Can, can you hang on, Gerald, please? I'm just making a note here.
Thanks for your persistence. That was a long time getting done. But, you know, the parks really do, um, benefit from your eagle eye and keeping track of stuff through the different people that come on this table. And, um, so I appreciate everything you do for the parks and the city.
Thank you.
So along that same line, you and I are well aware that this is something that has been near and dear to your heart for a long time and we've had a lot of conversations with it. So I appreciate you, you know, acknowledging that, uh, it took longer than it should have, but it's done and, um, so thank you. I appreciate you saying something.
Thanks again.
You bet. Anyone else? All right. Onto council updates, our library director. Uh, Mary, and I understand you have someone that's going to stand in for you on this?
Actually, I was going to stand in for her anyway, but it worked out good because she can't talk very well tonight. My name is Mary K. Thompson. My address is 2341 University Avenue and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for the library. And, um, on advice from George Seaman, the state librarian, who told us that trustees needed to sometimes do these reports, that's really why I'm here. Um, but I have a few things that I want to share with you and I'll try not to take very long because I know you have lots to do. I know that I can say with confidence that, um, the whole Board of Trustees is very proud of our library and the staff that we have right now. And we are learning and networking, um, all the time to try to help the library to be better with the things that we can do as trustees. In October, uh, two trustees went to Sturgis for a one-day workshop that dealt with library policies. That was very, very beneficial. Um, we do, when we have time at our meetings, um, we do look at our policies. We rotate and, uh, try to make sure that we're keeping things up to date and, um, legal. Um, we do have some policies that we can look at from some other libraries in the state that have used and paid a lot of money for lawyers to make sure that their wording is right. So, um, and they have told us that we could borrow from them. We had two, um, trustees go to a mini-conference in Rapid City that was, um, had a lot more libraries represented, uh, staff, trustees, directors. It was really, really good for networking and for learning. So we had a chance, you know, I had a chance to meet other trustees as well as directors and get lots of ideas. Um, Mary, Director Mary and Heather went to Institute in Aberdeen in June and at that time, one of the, many things happened that week, but one of the things that happened was that a new trustee manual was unveiled. Um, and I guess we're, we have one on the way, a hard copy. We've been looking at it online. So we will also be spending time at all of our meetings, um, going through that manual to make sure that we know, we understand everything, um, about our job. The old manual was many, many years old. I still have a copy, but it's, it's old. Mary went to the county commissioners early in June and spoke with them. We know that, um, what she says doesn't change. They're going to give us 25,000, they're going to give you $25,000 to support the library like they do and that's not going to change. But she at least shared with them some things that are, um, in the plans for the next year. One of those things is more programming, especially on the adult, on the adult side. Um, we have, in three years' time, we had a full staff for a very short time. I'm not even sure if it was more than a month. We have had a full staff for a month now and are really excited that we have, our latest hire is somebody who's really interested in programming and she will be able to focus on that because we do have a full staff finally. So we're excited about that. Um, another thing that needs to be researched is whether or not our library should join the Black Hills Consortium of Libraries. Um, that's been something that we've been talking about for years. It was too expensive, um, we couldn't even consider it. But one of the networking benefits from being in Rapid City at the mini-conference is that we talked to a director from Hill City who said it wasn't that bad. It wasn't that much work and it wasn't that expensive. It would offer lots of benefits to our patrons because we're about the only library in western South Dakota that doesn't belong. And once we would be a member of that consortium, our patrons could get books, titles, materials from any of the libraries in that consortium. And they also do training, which we miss out on because we're not a member. The other thing that Mary shared with them is, um, that is about the landscaping around the library. And the front yard of the library looks really, really good. Now, the back needs work. Um, the Friends of the Library, that group is interested in helping to furnish the patio, the back patio. But that can't happen until the, the eroding hill is, um, stabilized and then, then the patio could be leveled and then the sprinkling system could be repaired and the pods in the backyard could be rejuvenated as well. So everything there hinges on the, um, on the stabilizing that hill. And that's, we've known about that for, I don't know, before you came. I would guess for sure over two years, maybe three years. So, okay. Um, I would like to draw your attention to the paper that you got from Misty and I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, but I wasn't sure that it would make much sense if you couldn't see the numbers. So what I did today was look at, I don't even remember how many libraries this is. Um, I used the state library site, so this is all information that came from the latest reports that the librarians submitted to the state, um, last spring. So it's pretty current information. And I put the cities in order by population. Custer County has a, a county library, not a city library. It's the only county library in that list. So, um, it looks like the city of Custer has a lot of people that live there, which is not the case. That is the entire county population. But I'd like to draw your attention to the, uh, on the top part of the table, the top table, to the circulation per capita. And so when you know that these are in order from smallest to largest, the number there for us, 15.56, is the number of, um, things that were checked out per citizen in our town. Um, and they, everybody doesn't go to the library, we know that. But those numbers look pretty good. That number looks pretty good. Also, at the bottom line on that table is the state. That's the state count because they get all of those, um, pieces of information. And then moving to the, uh, clear to the right on that table, we, I talked about programming and how we want to work harder on programming. We look pretty good there too. This is the average number of attendees per program in a year. Okay? On the bottom table, I, I have the libraries in the same order. I want you to look at the visits per capita. Now Sturgis did way better than us, but we held our own with everybody else. Hill City, Hill City beat us a little. We do really well in visits per capita. And then we'll move over to, um, the sessions per computer, clear on the far right side. And, um, this is, we have, the state has us recorded as 18 computers for the public to use, which is actually true, but a little misleading. Because two of the computers are, they stay right up by the front desk and they are simply for patrons to be able to access the catalog. They can look up an author, see what books are available by that author, they can look up a specific book. If they're looking for nonfiction, they have to know where to find that in the library. Um, so those two computers are for that. And then there's a, another computer, a third computer, that simply keeps track of, if I am saying this right, Mary, keeps track of the internet usage at the library. And that's all that computer does. So technically, there's only 15 computers that patrons can come in and use to do their own private things. You know, fill out job applications, look something up, email, whatever. So the number that I have here, 531, I think is misleading because we really don't, people really don't get to have sessions on, on, they only get to have those sessions on 15 computers, which means that number should really be 637. Sessions per computer, 637 in a year. Is that right? That's right. Okay. All right. That's all I have to share with you. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me or not.
I just want to say thank you for the summary sheet.
Oh.
Not that we didn't enjoy reading the full report in the past, a lot of great data, but this speaks a very powerful message, so thank you for, for that.
Oh, you're welcome. I am one person who cannot just hear numbers. I have to look at them, so, all right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, previously we had a citizen come in and, um, public comment concerning the amount of time they're allotted to be on those computers. And, um, I had to kind of agree with her that if there's no one else waiting or in line to use a computer, why are we shoving people off of, or not allowing them to work on something more than an hour? So is that something that can be discussed or worked on or kept more track of and allowed to, to happen?
Actually, the, the way the system is set up, they, it automatically kicks people off the system after one hour if they log in as a guest, which is what that lady does. She doesn't live in the city limits, so she would need to pay $10 to, for a library card and that would give her double the amount of time. And we give her two hours every day that she wanted to be there. Um, our other patrons, our card members that, you know, get the two hours, they don't complain, nobody else complains about that. We really can't let somebody run their business from the library. And that's kind of what that situation amounts to.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I want to thank you for all that you do for the community. These numbers look great, absolutely wonderful in comparison and above and beyond others are, are per capita. So thank you, folks, for, for what you do. It's, it's showing dividends.
Yes, thank you for that information.
It's a really happy place to be. Come by sometime if you haven't been there in a while. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I've, I've still got some questions.
Don't run away.
Here.
I, I appreciate Deborah's question. And there were two individuals that spoke to the council from the public, uh, last week that because of the way we had done it in the past, you get five minutes and then we're just bobbleheads and say, thank you for your time, next. Didn't give us the opportunity to ask follow-up questions. And, uh, like Deborah, I wanted to be able to ask that individual, uh, are you running a business out of a public library using our internet time, using our equipment and those kinds of things? For me, that changes the conversation.
Yeah.
That, uh, you know, is somebody doing, does somebody want to do genealogy for eight hours a day? And if there's a computer available for them to do genealogy eight hours a day without, uh, you know, and other people are still able to get on it, that's different. But if someone simply doesn't want to invest in their business, you know, to have internet access and computers and they want to use other taxpayers' dollars to do that, then I view that frustration by them differently than I would otherwise. So, uh, council, that's one of the reasons that I feel, um, more than five minutes for each individual gives you an opportunity to understand what it is they're, they're talking about, so. gives you an opportunity to understand what it is they're, they're talking about. Thank you, Deborah, for asking the question. Thank you for the explanation of why you're doing it the way that you're doing it. So again, to follow up on Deborah's, someone who is, does have a library card, lives in the city, are they limited to two hours a day, period? Or can they get more than two hours a day if the computers are available?
They can, if they ask. You know, they need to ask because the computer just automatically shuts down on that person. And that's part of what that one computer does, I think. So the other thing that I wanted to say was that our policy is actually more generous than some of the other libraries in Western South Dakota. And I'm pretty sure Rapid City is one who doesn't let people use the computers as long as we do. So do you want to talk?
They are ninety minutes if you have a card in good standing. So you can be out there for ninety minutes at Rapid. But everywhere else, it's like thirty-minute sessions and that's it.
Good. So I just have a question. So if somebody is in the middle of something and they're not paying attention to the time and the computer shuts off, do they lose? Oh, okay.
The software system itself shuts the computer programming down and wipes out all the information as a security measure in case somebody walked off and forgot to close out.
Oh.
No, somebody comes in for a class or they eat something for all over time, we'll let us know that. We can put them on a computer and tell them there's a clock on there. Just let us know before it counts down and we can add to it while it's in progress. But otherwise, it just shuts down automatically.
Okay. That's, that's good to know.
Thank you for that Paul Harvey moment.
[laughing]
Okay. Not, not, not done yet. Friends of the library. My understanding is that pretty frequently, they purchase new computers for the library. Am I, am I misunderstanding that?
Nope, you're not.
I'm, I'm asking because, again, it was represented that the taxpayers are paying for those computers. Why are we limiting the amount of time that they have on them?
Okay.
So help us understand that, please.
The taxpayers are paying for the computers that the staff uses, but Friends of the library pay for the others. They pay for the computers used by the public, including those three that I talked about.
Uh huh.
And we got behind during COVID. And so they, because they used to do it, they do like six or eight at a time. But we got behind and so they did give new computers. They just got installed, I believe, last fall with all the software and everything, the newest software that they needed. And so at the last meeting, when they said they might, or that they were interested in buying patio furniture, they also said that they wanted to start getting so many new computers every year. And so, you know, Mary said, we are, we have a technology volunteer and she will be able to look at computers and say which ones might need to be replaced or maybe don't have the latest software on them. But our computers right now are working and people don't have to wait because computers are down. So it is really nice. But the Friends of the library buy, they have purchased all of the computers that the public uses, not taxpayers.
I wanted to give them recognition for purchasing the computers. It doesn't change the conversation about, you know, limiting the time. And you've answered that there are workarounds to that. So that, okay. And one final question. You had talked about stabilizing the back hill before patio work could be done. It's my understanding that the city administrator is working on getting some quotes to get the patio leveled. Mary, any comments?
Well, I, I think that the, I'm only talking because her voice is, she's struggling. But the, the hill really needs to get stabilized first because that's part of why the patio's cracked. It's not the only reason. The big flower beds that were there with lots of block and dirt are part of the reason the patio is cracked and needs to be leveled.
All right.
But I think that needs to be, and I know that the city administrator is working with Mary. She just said that to me today. He's working.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we had thought at one time that a city crew might be able to do that work, but they're so busy that we may have to have somebody, you know, an outside company come in and do that work.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
I got you.
One more.
So you mentioned the consortium.
Mm-hmm.
Is that like the interlibrary loan system?
I think so. It's kind, it's a little special, though. I've heard about, I'm not an expert at that. I've heard about interlibrary loans for a long time. I think the consortium probably simplifies that process some.
Digital expansion.
Oh, it will expand the digital resources that we have as well, which is really easy.
Okay, so, so the expense is, you get an increase in digital resources?
The expenses, which I, I believe that the expense is mostly relabeling the books and paying for a new management software. Because everybody, in order for it to work, everybody in the consortium has to use the same management software and they all have to have the same barcodes, same kind of barcodes.
I was gonna say, okay, I thought it was maybe an interlibrary thing, which I would be all for, but.
Well, we do interlibrary things.
We do have an interlibrary loans. Like, so you can get from Rapid and, okay.
Yeah.
Any of the physical books.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to personal action. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through C?
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through C.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our ordinance. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twelve fifty-nine?
Make a motion to approve the first reading, ordinance twelve fifty-nine, amend the fine and bond schedule.
Second.
Discussion? So I'm going to ask Misty and our attorneys, since our city administrator isn't here, to help us with this one. This is focused on the animal section of the ordinance. And we're looking at first offense, the times number of offenses and the habitual animal control and the vicious. We're just looking to add some additional amounts in there and clean that up a little bit. Am I, oh.
That's correct.
All right. Yeah, if you would, please. The public is always anxious to hear from our attorneys.
Sure. So we're just working on some of the fines and obviously bonds for some of those infractions. It was somewhat unclear before.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Misty, would you call the roll, please?
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Larry, oh, sorry, Gary Tellkamp.
Yes.
Linda Marvall.
Yes.
Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
And Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Onto new business, our first new business, item A. Can I get a motion to approve and authorize the finance officer to sign the sales order, lease agreement, and maintenance agreements?
I make a motion to approve and authorize the financial officer to sign the sales order, lease agreement, and maintenance agreement to replace the multi-function printer at the police department with the Century Business Products.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. That takes us to our new business, item B, that we added. And that's an acknowledgement for a notification of raffle from Casting Vets.
Make, I'll make a motion to approve a raffle from, request from Casting Vets to raise funds for their organization.
And this is, anyone that does raffles within the city of Hot Springs are required to notify the council that that's what they want to do. So this is what this is about.
Okay.
Do I need to list with her?
If you would.
Okay. Excuse me. Tickets will be, will sell locally during the Family Day Festival. Seven twenty-seven, twenty-four are twenty dollars each. The raffle is to win a Nordic Legend Power Ice Augur Combo. And the winner will be drawn and notified July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
All right. And you had a second, Misty?
Yes.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Brings us to our committee reports. Our first committee report, admin and finance. JR?
Admin finance was postponed and is now the twenty-second at one o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Misty, can you bail me out? I only printed the first page of the agenda, so I don't have the rest of the committee reports.
Airport advisory, either Zoe Gentry or Gary Tellkamp.
Thank you.
Okay, the airport advisory committee meet met on Thursday, July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, eleven o'clock AM at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. We had a call to order and roll call, members present, Shane Miller, Mark Buxbaum, and Petra Wilson. Employees, airport manager Ivan Venner, city administrator Bob Nelson, Jr., public works engineer Tracy Bastin, KLJ airport engineer Charlie Baker, myself, Gary Tellkamp, and Bill Lukens, and mayor Bob Nelson. There are no airport tenants. Member of the public, Jared Weiss, joined us. The agenda was amended to include a discussion about fuel pricing. There were no communications from the public. The airport manager update, the tax lane project update, aggregate is placed and paving is planned for July fifteenth and sixteenth. Monthly fuel sales, four hundred and two gallons sold in June. Monthly flight operations for June, eighty-two estimated flight operations, fifteen balloon launches, six landings. No observations were made for improvements by the public or, or committee members. Old business, the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-four balloon festival, review of preparations and action items need to be completed for the event. One was no drone signs will be posted and a planning meeting is scheduled for August first. New business, review of the tea hanger, final inspection report. The final inspection was completed June twenty-fifth and presented to High Country Erectors. All issues identified were minor. High Country Erectors is actively working to correct the issues. Five hundred and two days of liquidated damages have been assessed and will continue to project completion. This equates to approximately two hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars, which is twenty-eight percent of the contract. Tea hanger rental discussion. After lengthy discussion, the committee recommends leaving the rates for the twenty-twenty-four as published this year and notify potential occupants of a probable rate increase in twenty-twenty-five and possible annual rate adjustments to keep a fair market value and recover electrical consumption costs. It is recommended that additional rental agreement clauses be considered regarding minimum hanger occupancy time and preference to Hot Springs area registered aircraft. The South Dakota Department of Transportation Terminal Grant Application, Senate Bill one forty-four. A grant application was submitted and focused on remodeling the terminal restrooms. To date, no decisions have been made by the state. FAA Airport Terminal Program Grant. The grant application has not been submitted. The scope will include the terminal building, restrooms, and parking lot paving. Fuel pricing. The mayor discussed the need to rely on the airport manager's input in determining fuel prices and the potential of defining and utilizing a council-approved formula for fuel, formula to change fuel prices. Next meeting is set for August eighth at eight-thirty AM. And we stood adjourned at twelve-thirty, eight PM. And I'll give you a current update on the construction going on out there as of about four hours ago. Western had completed the first lift of the asphalt. They'll be on site tomorrow at eight o'clock in the morning. And they're going to do the second lift of asphalt, which will take care of the taxiways and approaches. And then they will sweep the area and they will spread out the soil in between the approaches. And then they'll sweep up everything and they'll be out, they're planning to be out there Wednesday night, complete it. They'll come back in the fall and they'll intend to seed the area in between the approaches with grass. So that's a, that's a pretty good report on that. That's current as of about four hours ago. Any questions? Of me?
I think you ought to keep him on the committee.
And I defer to Bill for next time.
Okay. Couple things, Gary, actually only one thing. We've talked about liquidated, liquidated damages before and around two hundred and eight thousand, am I?
Two hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars, two hundred and eight, two hundred thousand, eight hundred. I think that was, numbers came from Charlie.
But what, what's important about that is those liquidated damages are not going to be coming back to the city. They're going back to FAA, correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. A lot of people understand what liquidated damages are. I just feel it's important that those aren't coming back to the city so that we keep mentioning that. Thank you. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management Board met on July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, seven o'clock here at the, or, yeah, here at the Mueller Center. There wasn't anything important as far as the city's concerned. The notes will be online if anybody wants to, to read through those. The next meeting will be September twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, seven o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic preservation, Deborah?
This month's meeting was canceled. The next month will be August seventh, five PM here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
This, the July meeting did not occur. The next meeting will be August eighth, twenty-twenty-four, noon at the Evans Plunge Mineral Spring. All are invited.
All right. Thank you. Parks Recreation, Linda?
Okay, Parks and Recreation, their meeting for the month of July was postponed due to no agenda and they will meet on August seventh, twenty-twenty-four, two PM at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
They will be meeting this Wednesday, the seventeenth, six PM at City Hall.
Thank you. Public safety, Bill, JR?
Okay, public safety met on Thursday, July eleventh at two PM here at the Mueller Center. Members present were Councilman Huddleston, Councilman Tellkamp, myself, Mayor Nelson, and Assistant Fall River County Emergency Manager Gary Baker. Members of the public were Dave Bachelor, Laura Bachelor, and Carol McClelland. We adopted the agenda as published. Under communications from the public, a member of the public was present to relay a variety of public safety concerns in and around the Hampton Road and Walnut Avenue area. The specifics of these will be investigated and acted on if possible. The only update we had from the police department since they were in training that day is the June responses. The department responded to four hundred and seventy-five calls in June, seventy-three of which were high-risk. Year-to-date, seventeen point six percent of the two thousand, four hundred and four calls have been high-risk calls. Under old business, we reviewed the action item list. Gary Baker will determine if the NIMs training for elected officials is a recommended best practice or required, or required in order to comply with various regulatory requirements. Currently, no face-to-face training is planned for our area. Under the house number project, the local scout leadership has been provided with a list of missing house numbers so they can conduct a follow-up survey. The fuels reduction grant application- The fuels reduction grant application is in process, and progress continues to be made coordinating that effort with the BLM. The backup power grant application is being completed. This item will be removed from the public safety action item list and forwarded to the Public Works Committee. Under Emergency Communications Center, Golden West will be installing a dedicated emergency-use-only line in the conference room of the library. We had no new information from the state regarding the repair of the speed sign and its potential relocation. Under new business, the private signage request at Elm Street, the resident has been given the necessary guidance on that request. They'll be taking care of that themselves. The traffic control sign study has been completed. The report from Chief Norton will be discussed in the August meeting. Assistant Emergency Manager Gary Baker, on behalf of the local emergency planning committee, requested the city provide any ordinances addressing propane storage tanks. There are no specific ordinances that deal with the subject. It is, however, addressed in the codes adopted in Title Fifteen, Chapter One Fifty Point Zero One. This information will be provided to the LEPC through the Fall River County Emergency Office of Emergency Management. We adjourned at three-twenty-two p.m., and our next meeting will be Thursday, August eighth, at two p.m. at the Mueller Center. And again, this is a bit of a deviation from our first Thursday meeting because of the budget hearings on August first. Questions?
JR, anything you'd like to add?
No, good job, Bill.
Why, what's the reasoning behind they're asking about the ordinances for the propane tanks?
It came up in their, in the LEPC discussion.
Oh, is there something on their side they're interested in?
And can you help me with the LEPC acronym?
It's the Local Emergency Planning Committee, which is regulatorily under the State Emergency Response Commission, both of which were established by SARAH Title Three, which is the Superfund Amendment and Reauthorization Act that was essentially brought to bear after the, I want to say nineteen eighty-eight Bhopal India incident, in which, after a leak of methyl ethocyanate, about two thousand residents were killed. And so, based on that, communities are required to do emergency planning based on their hazardous chemical inventories, which isn't too hard for a place like Hot Springs, is our volumes, the main thing is propane, and because of the volumes. When you're in a place like the Gulf Coast, it gets a lot trickier.
Thank you.
I have just two quick questions, please. Emergency Communications Center dedicated emergency-use-only line, will there be an piece for that?
We don't believe so. To be verified, though.
And the traffic control sign study, you mentioned that it'll be discussed in the August meeting. Is that the public safety meeting or the council?
The August Public Safety Meeting.
Okay, so is that something the full council is interested in hearing or something?
I, it's a really short report, so I would say no. It'll be reported in, when JR gives the committee report next time.
Well, can the other line of the left side on the Public Safety Committee page as well?
We can make it that available. Probably do that after we've discussed it in committee, though.
Okay, thank you.
Can I address any other three-letter acronyms or four-letter acronyms?
They seem to be your specialty.
Thank you. Public Works, Bill?
Public Works will meet Tuesday, July twenty-third, one p.m. at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
All right. So Southern Hills Golf Course, that's myself. They met on July eighth. Members present were Superintendent Jason Happy, clubhouse manager Joe Low, Dave Merrill, Collette Miller, Don Alstead, Kathy Volmer, Greg Berry, and myself. The grounds crew is focusing on irrigation and course setup with the dry weather, trying to make sure that the course doesn't burn up is their, their main focus in maintaining playability out there. The rounds so far this year are approximately nine thousand, which is up one hundred and seventy-five percent for two thousand twenty-three. And talking with Jill about that, she feels that a lot of that is referrals, folks that have played here before, recommending to people that, you know, that they meet or whatever to come play Hot Springs. So that's huge. They have identified that we're losing some revenue from golfers who take up primetime tee spots, tee, you know, slots, just to reserve them, and then finding out that they're not showing up. So we're losing revenue on those. So Jill will try to identify, are those out-of-town folks? Are they local folks, members? And address that if somebody is abusing the privilege, then we'll address that appropriately. There's an area by the clubhouse that will be designated out-of-bounds, the new retaining wall. We've actually seen people climb up, climb up the side of it to play golf ball to the, it's a stroke, and that's, that's important. So they'll get that marked. There's other areas that need marking for out-of-bounds or other appropriate course management. We talked about the Ralph Sig Memorial Bench. That's in the works. They have decided where that's going to go. It's going to be between hole number four and number seven. The majority of the conversation, majority of the meeting was taken up. We, we have some golfers who, on the back nine, are repeatedly urinating on the public course, which is really disappointing. A while back, we started out by putting up a picture of a little person, you know, doing his thing with the sign through it. That didn't seem to take care of it the way that we'd hoped that it would. So we went ahead and actually posted signs that have the city ordinance talking about public urination helped some. And then we had, the committee got a recent letter from some concerned individual about the sign itself, feeling that with high school tournaments, younger tournaments or whatever, that wasn't an appropriate sign to have on our golf course. So they had asked if the committee would consider taking it down. One of the words used to describe the sign was, it was actually pornographic. I think that's a stretch for what that particular sign was. The committee did agree to go ahead and take that sign down and leave the notice of the ordinance violations that's up there, and talked with one of the folks that is having this particular problem and explained that the people that witnessed the event need to be the ones to notify law enforcement that there's a violation there. Reporting it to the clubhouse and expecting the clubhouse to then report it isn't something that ends up being legal or the correct way to doing it. And so the advice from the chief of police is to actually have the people that are witnessing the behavior. And there's a number of families on the back nine that have seen inappropriate behavior by golfers. It's disappointing that adults can't figure out how to behave in public. Just wanted to update the council and the public that we are taking this more seriously in hopes that if somebody can't figure out how to behave, they may find themselves in court facing a fine. Golfers be forewarned. That's all I have for you, unless you have any questions for me.
Have porta-potties been discussed?
A porta-potty was discussed, but in a closer to the holes that are seeing the most activity. And then it's a matter of getting the, the truck, you know, to, to be able to, you know, manage the toilet. And those end up being awful heavy trucks and trying to figure out how to get them across the fairways and the cart paths without causing any damage. So that option was never pursued.
There are restrooms along the course, though.
Yeah. When you're consuming more liquid than the bladder will hold, then it ends up being a problem, and some of the folks can't figure out how to manage that.
Would building some outhouses along the way be feasible?
I think anything is feasible. Let's, let's get a little more aggressive in citing these folks and see if that, that controls it.
If they lose their golf privileges, isn't that part of our agreement for allowing them use of the course?
I, I don't know specifically, Misty, whether that kind of language is included.
Specifically included by using the course in such a way, could it leave the abused service? It's a privilege to utilize the course.
We're looking at our attorneys.
I can't say for certain, but I do lean towards if it's not a contractual, if it's not a rule of regulation or something contractual upfront, no, those, those don't have a nexus between the right to use the golf course. It's a public facility, it's a public accommodation.
Is it a public facility? If somebody goes to bathroom, a place that is not bathroom, is that not enough to say?
Well, I'm sure it's a crime, right? So I would view it under that lens. It's just a crime. People commit class-two misdemeanors all the time. If you're speeding, can you use a public facility? You get a ticket for speeding? Well, yes, you can.
I had an incident happen at the campground that was similar in nature, and I reported it to the ranger, who reported it to the sheriff's office, who told, who told us that unless it was sexual in nature, they couldn't do anything about it.
Well, we'll, we'll trust that the folks that are most affected by this, they've been asked to go ahead and call dispatch and let them know so that the police can respond and go through that process and see if it eliminates it.
Yeah. Hopefully you get a different answer than I did.
You can't let public, you can go to bathroom wherever you want.
Well, I think the difference, Linda, is there is a city ordinance that says no public urination in, in the parks or any other recreational facility, whereas the county probably doesn't have that.
Probably not the county, but this is federal, and I do provide bathrooms.
All right. Thank you. Onto our finance officer report. Misty, do you have anything you'd like to share with the council?
Just like to remind you that tomorrow is the deadline for our SVP for the elected officials workshop, if they're interested in attending. Because the FM Finance meeting does not help the original date scheduled, I also want to make you aware of an agreement with Dakota State University and Project Boundary Fence to conduct penetration testing for the city of Hot Springs. That'll be on the next agenda for approval. Travis, I'd like to send the agreement to you. And then anyone else who's interested in seeing it before the meeting for review, and that agreement will be on the next agenda, right? Excuse me, for approval for the testing to begin or the assessment to start September twenty-third.
How long are they going to be doing it?
How long?
Just one day?
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
It's one week.
Oh, a week?
Yep.
Are they doing it? So they're just testing the security of our network?
Yeah, I'll let you read through the details of what they do.
They say for the council, that's what it is.
And then some of it's our technology. So in the Finance Officer School that we attended, we listened to a breakout session and discussed some grant money that's becoming available at the state level, and you have to participate in this penetration testing with DSU in order to be eligible for any of those funds. And so we had talked about this previously a few years ago with our, excuse me, IT folks. And at that time, they weren't really interested, but now that there's money attached, I encouraged them to maybe take a look at it again and see if they can assist us with this and let them do this type of testing to ensure that we're safe and compliant as we can be. And then if there's any recommendations for improvement, that we could have some grant monies available to help us do those things.
Does that cost us?
No.
So they're doing the pen testing for, as a service?
Correct.
Okay. And we just have to, our IT guys just have to open up the system to allow it to happen?
I, I don't even think they're supposed to open it up. They just are made aware of it.
Okay, so they're going to try to pierce it?
Yeah.
Misty, will the elected officials workshop be available online as it was last year?
Because of the quality of the footage that was available to you, they decided not to do it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. We have an executive session in front of us, so I won't bore you with anything from me. I'll reserve that to next time, depending what our agenda looks like. So that brings us to our executive session. If I could get a motion to go into executive session?
Make a motion, we go into executive session in accordance with South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two, legal.
Second.
So that would be one twenty-five, one dash twenty-five dash two, three.
Three.
Legal. Discussion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. There'll be a pause, and there will not be any action taken when we come out of executive session. So, let's go ahead and take a few minutes, and then we'll see everybody in executive session. All right, this is great. Let's, we got everybody back at nine-twenty-six. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
Great.
It looks like it might be a little